To more.
Welcome, everyone, to the community of all meeting for December nineteenth. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Adoption of the agenda, oh, sorry, adopt, uh, call the meeting to order at five oh five P M. Adoption of the agenda, may I have a mover, please? Deputy Mayor Dornboss, seconder. That's your feeble corn. There is one item to add under in camera personnel C A O negotiations. Um, does anyone else have anything to add to the agenda? Great, I'm hearing nothing to be added or amended. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Reception of devil to gets, uh, Tammy Thompson with Start Program, welcome Tammy.
Thank you. I have a presentation that's gonna go up on the screen there. This week for that, um, so as you said, I'm Tammy Thompson of the Start Program, I've been there, well, Start Program's been around for twenty years now. We celebrated our twentieth anniversary this year, uh, so very pleased about that. Um, we've changed an awful lot during that time. Um, was it better if I stamped?
Okay. Oh, yes, whatever you're comfortable with.
I'm a bit of a wanderer. It was that, um. Yeah, so we've been around for twenty years and we've grown a ton, especially in about the last five years. So I thought it was a good time to head back out here to Saint Andrews and tell you guys all about it because it very much affects your communities. Um, uh, we do serve Saint Andrews, St. Clement's, the city of Selkirk, as well as Broken Haddon, Joplin Nation. Um, and you can just hop onto the second slide, I need a signal here or something.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be right, one more second, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna just share this one to Zoom meeting so Lori can see it.
Good.
And then we're all set to go.
Okay.
I'll, I'll just confirm, Lori, you can see that?
Yes, I can see it, thank you.
Okay, perfect, so, uh, I've got a lot of ground to cover and a little bit of time, so I'm gonna speed talk right now. So if you wanna just keep up with me, that would be great. Okay, perfect. Okay, so what is Start? Um, you can just keep rolling and I'll keep going, we're both a program and a model. Um, originally Start began in Selkirk and serving this area. Uh, and we were the only one that was here, uh, but since then, our program has grown to include other communities. Um, and so we had to develop our program as a model as well, so that other communities could take that on as well. Uh, we are, what would today be called a community mobilization model? Or a multi-agency collaborative model, or a wraparound model, all those terms would apply to us as well. But community mobilization is the phrase today. Um, we are client-centered information sharing protocol, which means that our clients are at the center of everything that we do. Uh, we're not, um, you know, serving the, uh, mandates of other agencies. Our client is the person who we are helping and serving, and we are bringing those mandates to our clients. Um, and at the essence, the concept is to share information. So we're consent-based, which means that we can bring all these different agencies to the table. So the agencies who sit on our board are kind of the beginnings of the agencies that would come to the table. So Child and Family Services, the R C P, Manitoba Justice, um, the school, Lord Selkirk School Division. I E R H A, so mental health, public health, all different sides of it. And addiction services, we're not from the beginning. But then we will add any agency that a client might need. So we look at people in a very individualized way. Um, so what one client might need might be completely different than what another client needs to surround and support them. Create plans that we all work towards as a team, including the person that we're working with. I think initially when Start began, that was the complaint we had was that agencies would talk to each other and then they'd say, well, this is what you need to do. That's what, not what Start is about, Start puts that person in the center of it, we ask them what they want and what they need, and then we help them achieve that. Um, we're very inclusive, um, so for working with a youth, we try to have the youth at the table too. Clearly, that's not always a situation where that's, you know, doable if we, we have a child who's been sexually abused, we can't bring them to the table and talk about that. It's not appropriate. Um, but we want them to come to the table as much as possible when they can to tell us what they need. But we always have the family there representing them as well. And then for our adult clients, they are, they are always there. Um, like I said, very individualized, separate plans for everybody, we're not fitting people into the box at all. Um, very professional, uh, we really created a name for ourselves within the community. And I, I think we've seen that by how our program has grown. And our program grows is because other agencies come to us and ask us to grow. So, um, so it's been really great. And we always work under a positive perspective. We deal with some really, really difficult situations in clients. In fact, our clients are the highest average people within our communities. Um, but we can do that in a positive way, you can deal with bad things or difficult things in a positive way, and that's what we always strive to do. And our goal is a reduction of risk for our clients, our families and our communities. So initially, last time I was here, probably, um, the Start Program had to start youth. So we work directly with youth, um, between the ages of, I think our youngest client's been six. And our oldest client is twenty-one, simply because, uh, for people who are low cognitively and still allowed to be in the school system, we need to do youth program. But, um, due to, uh, a really great evaluation, I'll say a few things about later. Um, the provincial government came to us and asked us to expand to adults, which is what we start is. And then C F S has just recently came to us for Start Families, and that's working with perpetrators of domestic violence. Um, we also do short-term consults for the R C M P, uh, and I'll talk a little bit more about them too. So we've broadened out quite a bit. We'll continue on. So these are all the other programs in the area. Youth programs are running in, uh, Selkirk, Steinbach, Dauphin, and First is in Gimli. So you guys might actually be familiar with them, because I think you cover a bit of that territory as well. Uh, programs in the same area, and then Start Families, um, is run out of our, our office, but covers a wider area over into the Steinbach area as well. So Start Youth, uh, up to age twenty-one, so as I said, and we're gonna continue. So this is what it would have looked like before. Uh, youth and family would have worked separately with all the different agencies. And if you can imagine being a person who's struggling in the first place, doesn't know how to talk to agencies, engage with agencies, get support from agencies. Uh, and having to do that all on your own with all these different agencies would be really daunting. But on the next slide, you'll see that this is what Start does, is that we connect all the agencies together, but also put Start in the middle. So it makes us their advocate and their go-to person, and we case manage for them. So that means that people actually do get the supports that they need. And they have somebody to come to in between when things are going really bad. Which, I mean, when, when somebody is living a, a more higher-risk lifestyle, that happens a fair bit, right? Uh, and even if somebody's doing good, sometimes they have the pitfall, right? And they need somebody to help bring them out of that and say, no, no, you're doing good, let's continue on in the same path. So that's what Start looks like. Um, so how does it work? Uh, we are the first program of all the community mobilization programs that put the court, a coordinator as a case manager. So you might have heard of the hub model or different models that are out there too. Um, they did not have a coordinator case managing, and that actually was a deficit. They're now starting to, to do that, um, copying us in essence, because it works to have somebody who's holding it all together. So a lot of programs, like wraparound programs, rely on somebody to do the job off the side of their desk, on top of their original job, like school social workers or so on and so forth. I can tell you, this is more than a full-time job, so there's no way that's going to work. Uh, collaboration is powerful, we work better when we work together. Uh, we truly do include the client, the family at the table. We do not judge people, and people come to us in the worst moments of their lives. The last thing they need is for anybody at the table to judge them for what they're going through. So we are very, very strict about ensuring that people understand that they're safe there, that they can say whatever they need to say. Uh, we have all the client's information in one place. I'm located in the R C P detachment, our, our program is located there. And, uh, that is incredibly helpful when you have someone who is arrested and in cells. And members get like, they get the moment in time, right? They get the call and that's all they really know about this person. But if it's one of our clients, we know the background, we know if they're off their meds, we know who their C F S worker is, we know, we know all these different things. That is immensely helpful to the R C P, but even more so helpful to our clients in those moments. Uh, we're on tops, at the top of issues faster, like if you're in cells, that's a great time to make change. A lot of people decide to go to treatment at that point in time. But, um, because of our collaboration with the school division, uh, we know right away if kids aren't going to school. Like, they call us and they say, hey, your client hasn't showed up in three days, okay, we're on that right away, right? Before it gets really bad. Um, we're able to pool our resources, uh, trying to get things like assessments done are really difficult for organizations like schools, because they're expensive. And they have few resources that have to cover a lot of kids. If we've got a youth who is on probation, we can have that assessment done through probation services. We all get the information, we can all use it to make better decisions and to help these people. Um, everyone's on the same page, so when we sit there at the table and we make a plan, we're all pulling in the same direction. And that is immensely helpful. Um, it helps build strong relationships, um, clients feel more engaged in their communities, they're more connected to their agencies. When you have an R C P officer come to the table, and before all they ever had was an R C P officer arresting them. That really changes their perspective of, of who that person is and, and whether they're out to get them or whatever. So it really does build, uh, better relationships, and it provides accountability for everybody, not only the client, but for those agencies who are overworked and things are falling off the side of your desk, right? We get to be the squeaky wheel. And Start belongs to everybody, so that includes you guys here at the R M of St. Clement's, right? Part of the community, but all of our community partners who sit on our board, all of the community partners, different agencies who don't, but still come to the table. Places like Turning Leaf and, and Inclusion Selkirk and, and all these different agencies who are out there, who, who, who benefit from working collaboratively. Okay, so we've had two assessments, one quantitative and one qualitative assessment, so the qualitative assessment. Um. Coming up, there we go. So the Start Program by definition takes some of the most serious young offenders in Selkirk, this was for young offenders only. As such, re-involvement rates were expected to be higher than desirable. What was really interesting about this is that we use the R C P database for this. And this focus was on people who had F A S D cognitive delays or mental health issues. So when we matched with the R C P database, we could match on a whole bunch of things, the types of crimes, the age, gender, ethnicity, size of community. But you can't match on whether somebody has mental health issues, cognitive issues, or F A S D, because it's not in the R C P database. So in effect, we were being, our clients were being ranked against people who may not have had these kind of issues at all. So the person doing the assessment thought we were gonna come out really bad, but really, what happened was, we, even with that deficit. We still showed almost a fifty percent decrease in re-involvement rates. So what we're doing works, and we've known that, and we've seen that, we keep meticulous statistics on our programming. Um, and also for those who did reoffend, uh, their number of new charges were reduced by three and a half times. And often what we saw was a breach charge rather than a whole new involvement charge as well. Okay, started successful in reducing recidivism rates for youth, even if they have low degrees of family support. So often we will find families who just don't have the skills to support their kids. And that's why we're seeing kids get in trouble, obviously, we're gonna work with them on those skills. But, um, even in those situations, we were able to make these reductions, because we were able to prop the family up and support the family. And if mom didn't know what to do about what junior did yesterday, she can phone us and talk to us about it, and then we can help them take appropriate action. And overall, the number of recharging or recidivism rate were significantly reduced with our clients. So that was that, so that is what led to the provincial government funding the adult program restart. So coordinated inter-agency planning, same thing for eighteen-plus people who are justice-involved. Justice-involved is a really loose definition, though, it could include people who go missing, it can include people who the police are, are in contact with, uh, because of mental health issues. So not even, it doesn't have to be chargeable offenses, and even if you were a victim, because we were able to get victim services to sponsor this program as well. So we can assist victims as well, so justice of invol- involved, it means the police are in contact with you for some reason. Um, reside within our areas, and, uh, we have an open, uh, referral initially for our programs, was just for involved agencies way back when. People, as they got to know us, they called us directly, so we get a lot of self-referrals and parental referrals now. I'm not gonna go into this one, I'm gonna pass, I've got, actually got some information for you that I'm gonna leave with you. Start Families is our newest program, started in April this year. Uh, it is fully funded by Child and Family Services, and we work with the Adult Perpetrators of Domestic Violence. And we use the term perpetrators very specifically and purposefully, because we need them to understand that they are, uh, the ones who need to take responsibility for their actions. So it combines Start with, uh, the Safing Together Model, which is a model that C F S General Authority is using now. Um, and it, we look at all different forms of domestic violence, so it doesn't have to be just physical, it can be everything along the span, including coercive control. Which is actually one of the most harmful forms, we always look at, at physical though, and we're a two-phase program. I'm not gonna read all this, but, um, it focus, uh, it focuses the abusive behavior on the person doing the behavior. And asks them to look at the effect of that behavior on their families and the people around them. So it starts, the first phase is a counseling portion where it's one-on-one between a counselor and the perpetrator. Uh, and they work through that, and then once we work through the stages of change and they get to the action stage, then we flip them kind of over into the Start stuff. So if they have mental health issues, if they have substance use issues or anything else, we can work on it then. Um, but we really need to take this away from this being a victim blaming kind of concept, where we say, well, why didn't she leave? It really needs to be, why did he do that? I'm using women and men generally, just because men are eighty percent of our client base at this point in time. But that's the reason behind it. Um, and we've had some really good success, which I've also included in here even in the first months for this. Uh, and short-term consults is something else new that we've been doing since July twenty twenty, directly for the R C M P. They, uh, can make referrals to us of anybody they've had an interaction with. In fact, we have a stamp back in the prison area, and they can just stamp it, it says Start Recommended, and then we reach out. Um, often, these people are not becoming full clients, because they're kind of pre-contemplative, right? They're not quite sure they're there yet, but it's about thirty percent of the time, we flip them over into other programs. This is the breakdown of where our clients are coming from, so you guys are roughly about, uh, twenty percent of our client base from St. Clement's, or sorry, St. Andrews. Uh, and St. Clement's is a little bit less, or Selkirk has the, the bulk of it, which I'm sure you're used to seeing. And that is it. That's the really fast version of Start. So I do have these for all of you, that I will pass on, and, and I threw some exercises, these are, it's our last year of report twenty twenty-one. Um, but yes, love to take on any questions if you have them. Thank you, council, do you have any questions for Tammy?
You're in the building, as far as I'm building in Selkirk.
Uh, yes, yeah. So I did include in there a funding request as well. Um, currently, the R M St. Clement's gives us thirty-five hundred dollars a year for our programming. We would love it if you guys could join them in that amount. Um, and the city of Selkirk is actually taking this up this year to make it part of an ongoing budget. Um, so that we're not coming back year after year, um, looking for funding, so. That would, we provide you with funding in the past, in, in three weeks, something like that? About once in the last five years.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Yeah, what's your best conventions of us?
Uh, well, other than funding, um, I would say just to be supportive of what we're doing. And, you know, send people our way if they need help. Um, we report back to you with our numbers and all that stuff, uh, on an annual basis.
So other than referrals from the R C P, you can, somebody reach out to you on their own to?
Anybody can refer, they can refer themselves, we have kids, we refer their friends, which I think is the cutest thing ever, like, so wonderful. But yeah, anybody, yeah. Yeah, and if we can't help them, they don't fit with our program, we will find a different program.
Um, just. And are these programs, like, are they mentioned in, in schools and stuff like that?
Well, for our youth program, uh, we are actually physically in the schools, that's where we have our meetings, because that's where the kids are. So we go and meet, um, all of the, the organizations on our board, like, I always say, we belong to everybody and nobody all at the same time, because we can walk into C F S and they go, come on in! You know, I can do probation, and they open the door for us, you know? So we're used to working in all of those venues, we go to where our clients are.
Sorry, I missed it, how long, how long has Start been, uh, up in Selkirk?
Twenty years, yeah, twenty years this October. Yeah.
Yeah, I have a question, how many employees do you employ?
Mm-hmm, we have six now, so we have four full-time employees, one point six, and one casual clerk.
And all in the detachment or?
All in the detachment, yeah. We do a bit of a hybrid, we have, our office is tight, but, um, we have four desks within our office. And so we have some people, often we're, we're not in the office, we're out where the clients are. Um, but we, we do a hybrid kind of concept, uh, for our family's coordinator that covers the Steinbach area, she's usually out in that charge.
So do people come to your office in the R C P building? Is that how they come and have a conference or things like that?
They can, absolutely, we're always looking to meet our, literally and figuratively, meet our clients where they're at. So, um, if you have a client who's just not comfortable coming to the R C P detachment, we get that, like.
I know me, me and Rob is, uh, him is a former correctional officer, me is a correctional officer, lots of these people don't like, uh, coming into establishments like that.
Absolutely, so.
So I thought that might be a detractor from, uh, people wanting to, you can join the program.
Yeah, it can be, um, sometimes I, I lead with, I'm not an R C P officer, I'm a counselor, is what I lead with. Um, we're really good at building those relationships with people. So yes, if they're, they have an issue with coming in there, that's not where we're gonna ask to meet them. Uh, with the exception of the families program, we always have perpetrators, because they are perpetrators, we're looking at safety for our staff. They have to meet with them in detachment, that's the requirement, but for our youth that are restart clients, if you're more comfortable meeting at Tim Hortons, I'll go meet you at Tim Hortons. You know, that's fine.
Thank you, excellent presentation, any further questions, Councilwoman? Okay, well, thank you, and we'll include this with our budget discussion.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. And, and happy holidays.
Thank you.
Oh, I have extra clock, there's extra coffees here, I gave one for the missing counselor, Tammy, I can give you these.
Yes.
Thank you.
If you some turn back.
Yeah, very good, thanks so much for your help.
Thank you, now we'll have our municipal act presentation from our interim C A O, Jim Bensky.
Why you down?
Yes, please.
Jim, I supposedly practiced this song, I was just impressed. Hopefully I'm not going to keep on, I really wanna go to the act, because especially for the newbies. Uh, just so you understand some of the things we have, we tend to get it up. And I think we've gotten it, if I go like this, he'll just do what he, he's supposed to push button, but I won't guarantee, because I won't guarantee I'll go like that. It's better with what normally happens in most of these cities, congratulations on being elected. You've now joined a very unique group of people who are going to provide services to your community this way. Okay, Tim, we'll go for number one, and we'll go from here and see how it goes, just, just the vote there. You still with us, Lori?
I am, Jim, thank you.
Good. You can tell them how much, how many stories I'm telling Lori when you're undone.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, I'm ready.
You ready?
Sure.
Just push the button. Okay, first thing that we need to understand is what your status is in terms of being a government. We all know what government means, right? Left-wing officials who have certain, uh, rules that they live by. Okay, so, and they're, they're legally, they, so in the Canadian, uh, in the, sorry, uh, next one? Okay, in the Canadian Constitution, there's absolutely no mention of municipalities. There's no mention of, uh, local government authorities, in fact, you don't exist, the government of Canada. Right? Um, the responsibility, authority, uh, for municipalities was given down by the federal government to the provinces in a charter. If you read the charter of the province of Manitoba, there's no mention of municipalities. There's no mention of local government authorities, they don't exist. So the two senior levels of government, you don't exist, in terms of fair charters. Okay? Other than the region of Ottawa, the national, uh, capital, a part of the city of Ottawa belongs to the federal government. It's the permanent grounds and, and area around surrounding, our grounds, in actual, the government of Canada, the security people suggested that should be increased to include the Ottawa Mall. That is what is governed by Canada, Manitoba, so in, my point is that you as a municipality, or you as a governing authority. Have a responsibility, you have to, one, enforce the laws of Canada. Um, and you have to, that includes the government, uh, criminal code, the Environment Act, Cannabis Act, in Canada will lay out what the rules are. And the man, and they tell Manitoba, Manitoba tells you. Um, a municipality is not charitable agency, people see, I often hear people saying, can you give me a tax write-off? And we can write a letter, but we're not a charitable agency. The letter is something that you can give to an individual if they give you money for a program. Say for a library, say for the trails that are being suggested at Piercefield, someone wants to raise money, Miss Polly can give them a letter. Can't give them a charitable number, because you're not, uh, an agency. C R A then decides whether or not it's actually a donation. If it's C R C, A, say, isn't it donation? Then can you imagine what the government guy that's gonna give you the money so we can get tax write-off, has to say to you? You just keep those things in your mind. Um, Manitoba, the province of Manitoba, has created you as local authorities, but Manitoba missed that. I can't even read this.
It's pretty small, very small, yeah.
Okay, and the charters, what the charter does is recognizes bodies, organizations, which have existed prior to nineteen, or to eighteen?
Seventy.
Seventy, as local authorities. Um, I can't even think of one of them, but there's about fifteen, that municipalities or local authorities that existed. Prior to, so they're separately, other than that, the government of Manitoba creates them, uh, some of them by charters. City Winnipeg is a charter. Um, and City Winnipeg actually is a totally separate piece of legislation from the Municipal Act. These are terrible. Yeah. Okay, um, again, the point is, is you're not a government, you are a local governing authority. You're called government, Manitoba calls you a government, don't they? They talk about municipal government. But you're really a, a local authority, understand that, what it really means at the end of the day is you are a child of the province. You exist at the pleasure of the province of Manitoba, and the province of Manitoba can remove that. That's why when you, and the reason for you understanding this is, you hear things like, uh, Prime Minister announces a, a grant for a couple billion dollars. To be given to Manitoba, it's given to Manitoba, but it's intended for, and he says, for water and sewer plants, which are operated by municipalities. You make your application out to a body that goes to Manitoba, Manitoba submits it on your behalf. That's why, is you don't exist constitutionally, so that's the process they use to get money down to you. So when you, when the staff starts telling you, you gotta send this thing to some committee, that's the process we have to go through. That makes the process longer, that's the reason you need to understand it, so you don't get frustrated that this takes so damn long to happen. We do the next one?
Uh, sure.
Okay, what the government's also done in the act is, has said you are a corporation, subject to the same standards and responsibilities of a corporation under the Corporations Act. The problem with that is, is that you're also under the Municipal Act, and it restricts the responsibilities, so those that work in the corporate industry. And it restricts the responsibilities. So those that work in the corporate entity, you know what those rules say. The rules for a municipality are the corporate rules, then you add municipal ones on top of them. So you, you don't have the same uh operating restrictions. Or you have more actually operating restrictions in corporations, but you incorporate a body. That means you have to live by the laws of the corporations, the Human Rights Act, Environment Act, all of that legislation. Your staff has to know and understand all of that legislation. It's a huge responsibility for your staff. Because you can get in trouble very easily. I have an example of, of, of that tonight, uh, later on. Next please. Municipal Act defines the duties and responsibilities of a council. The Municipal Act establishes the duties and responsibilities of the head of council, individual counselors, and the designated personnel, personnel of the municipality. Municipal Act prescribes processes through which a council must and shall act. It provides, uh, gives, gives you the flexibilities um and how you provide services to citizens. It's, yeah, you're subject to uh all of the laws of the province of Manitoba. And must be noted that Municipal Act is inferior legislation. So every piece of legi- legislation, the Environment Act, Criminal Code, all of those pieces of legislation, they are superior. That means you have to enforce them. As municipality. It must be noted that the city of Winnipeg, and you hear the way the city Winnipeg works, and you hear the news, some of the things they're doing, they are under a separate piece of legislation. They're not the same as a municipality, any other municipality in the province of Manitoba. Make-up of a council. The act says that a council is composed of the head of council and not fewer than four, and not more than ten individuals. Uh, this council admit for many years have said seven is magic number. Okay? Uh, council says that by bylaw, you, you can change the number of counselors. Uh, and there are no specific rules in the change other than it has to be more than four and less than ten. Uh, your age must be eighteen and you must, oh, sorry, then uh, the Municipal Act says you can add a youth member. Youth member has to be above the age of eighteen, and the youth member does not have a vote. And this is just a personal note, but why would you wanna be a youth member if you don't have a vote? You can, you can, you can talk, everything else, but at the end of the day, you can't vote. Doesn't make sense to me, but that's the government. Youth member is not considered part of the quorum. So in a vote, it's only the seven of you. Council is responsible for developing and evaluating the policies and programs of the municipality. Ensuring the powers, duties, and functions of the municipality are appropriately carried out. And for carrying out the powers and duties and the functions expressly given to council under this or any act of the government of Manitoba or Canada. Councils must establish a code of conduct for council. We must set the standard and value of council expects members to meet in their dealings with each other and the employees of the corporation and the public. Council may censure any member of council. And censure is determined, can be, or uh, is determined by a vote. And it is only appealable to the court of queen's bench. That includes chasing or sending or throwing a member out of the meeting. I keep saying council because it's council. It's you seven people. You are the floor, you are the boss, not the mayor. So remember that. It's very, very important because uh, it, mayor's job will be defined short. Um, the act in clause eighty-four provides any member of council can discuss with the C A O or any designated officer a matter, uh, a matter referred in a case before any matter uh is made, uh, before it becomes public, a public issue. So any member of council can talk to any member of, of senior management team or the C, well, talk to C A O. Okay, and then council may delegate his powers, duties, and functions by bylaw to the head of council, council committee, or the C A O or designated officer. I lost sound again, guys. In the bylaw, with everyone who can listen to it. Okay, no, no other, you can't assign that to anybody else. All right? This one, Tim?
I think, uh, I think the recording or the volume crapped out for Lori. Lori, are you back? Can you hear us?
Yes, I have it back again now, Tim. It was gone for about three, four minutes. It's back now.
Uh, sorry about that, Lori.
No problem. I was, I was still, I was still reading what you're doing there. So I was still following. Not a problem, Jim.
Thanks. Okay, the act does not specifically mention whether or not a council shall, will, or may manage any programs, policies as established by council. The act also does not provide any specific supervisory responsibilities for council. But really, the act is pretty good. It allows you to do what you want to do. But as a council, remember, if you say that you want to be the supervisor of the public works department, for example, then damn, you're gonna be there from eight o'clock in the morning when they arrive to five o'clock at night and do the job. You guys don't wanna do that. Guaranteed, you're getting paid better than, that won't say that. The act does not go, uh, the act does not give any member of council the right or the responsibility to spend the resources of the corporation. Okay? Responsible of the council, each member of council has following duties. One, to consider the well-being and interests of the municipality as a whole. And to bring to council's attention anything that would promote the well-being of the municipality. You've been elected ward members and, and need to speak on behalf of the members of your ward, no question. But overall, when you're making your decisions, you should be thinking what is best for the municipality. And just keep that in mind. It's easy to deal with some of the word stuff. It becomes an issue if you start thinking about it as just words, cause every word is different. I think you all know that. Okay, um, to participate in developing policies and procedures and programs in the municipality, to participate in the meetings of council and council committees and other bodies to which the member is appointed, to keep in confidence any matter that is in a closed and public session. Um, to comply with the code of conduct and to perform other duties and functions as imposed upon you by the council. Does all of that make sense so far? Okay, that's the next one. The authority for any, to expend any financial resources to me, oh, sorry, it must be known that the head of council is considered an ordinary member of the body. Okay? Um, and therefore is required to vote on all issues. And unless otherwise established by bylaw, the head of council does not possess any of the following. The authority to spend the resources of municipality, to provide direction to the personnel of the municipality, to provide any discipline uh to the personnel of municipality, or the authority to spend any personnel of the municipality. Just so you understand that the mayor is the boss. Good point. But you guys are the guns in patrol. You, you are the people who tell people what to do. And you do that by voting, by resolution. Okay? Right, Tim? Duties, a council may only act by bylaw or by resolution. Uh, when an action is not, oh, sorry, slow down, Tim. Where a council is expressly required under bylaws to act, do something by bylaw, it can only be done by bylaw. Where an action is specified under bylaw, council may do it, may, sorry, where an action is not specified to be done under a bylaw, a council can do it by resolution. Acting by bylaw is not, when not required, does not make the action invalid. That's a little complicated after a while, isn't it? Okay, thanks. Next one. Every bylaw must be given sep- two, uh, three separate readings, and it must be done over two meetings. How you do it is you can do it two, two at the first, one at the third. Hey, Tim? The protest in the bylaw must be made available to every member of council at the first reading and at the third reading. And where any or any other act requires a public hearing, the hearing must be undertaken before given by bylaw at third reading. Previous readings of bylaw, I think, uh, bylaw is not proved if it sits in advance without third reading for two years, then it's gone, or if it's defeated at third reading, it doesn't exist anymore. Council committees, I understand that as a group, I know that the, the last council kind of got rid of standing committees. Um, I, I believe you wanna bring them back. Uh, committees can be of, of value. They can also be a pain, but we'll go through them. A council committee may be composed of entirely members of council, a combination of members and other persons, and persons who are not members of council. The head of council is a member of all committees. Uh, sorry, the head of council is a member of all committees unless specifically stated otherwise in the organizational bylaw. The head of council is their ex officio. Ex officio member does necessarily have the right to speak unless the chair of the committee allows it or the bylaw allows it. The resolution of council, of a council committee is not binding on council at all. One of the things in this, be a learning is something to, to mark in the back of your mind. Often what councils do to make things fast is they go, the committee, minutes of the committee, of the public works committee, for example, is approved, and there's fifteen recommendations in there. Guess what? You just all approved fifteen recommendations. And recommendation number five was, we wanna spend five point nine million dollars, page and Fenske's salary. You never approve a committee minutes. All you do is you say that the minutes of a committee will be read, and you go through each recommendation, one at a time with a separate resolution. This didn't have, I've never heard this in Manitoba, but what happened in Saskatchewan is they did that, public works department bought a brand-new grader for approximately five hundred thousand dollars. And council said, what the hell did you do? Proved it. It can happen. It's not done on purpose, but you need to know the rules. Okay, uh, resolution of, sorry, okay, initially, a council must, within the organizational bylaw, establish the membership of the committee, the terms of reference and responsibilities of committee, the reporting relationship of the committee. And whether or not the committee and what the rules are for them to meet. You have a procedural bylaw. If I read, read through that bylaw now, it says if a committee exists, the committee has to operate by the same rules as council, the same procedures, the same advertising. They need staff there, uh, personnel on staff to be available. They have to produce minutes. They have to be set up like this, so the public can see them, cause it's a public meeting of council, of a committee of council. So the rules of council are the same as the rules of committee. So saying, yes, you wanna have a finance committee or a public works committee, you have to realize what that comes as the cost of a staff person to be here was probably an overtime hours. Someone to operate the system like Tim has, and I don't think he wants to be here five nights a week, so we gotta train people to do that. Then you have to do the minutes, publish them, then deal with them at council. So when you get into committee's discussions, think about it carefully. Cause one, it's costly, and two, um, it's a lot of work and a lot of stress on staff. Oh. Uh, she said, yeah, I've gone actually further than Tim, Tim didn't catch nothing. Minutes must be made from each committee meeting. Um, they have to have a quorum. They live by the same rules that you live by. Makes sense? Okay. Next one, Tim. Fire chiefs are here and they're waiting for me. Okay, responsibilities of C A O. Council must by bylaw create the position of C A O and appoint someone to the position. It's my opinion that for council, you do what I, when I sent you a copy of the potential contract, it has the bylaw in it. I think you hire a C A O, you put his job description right into the bylaw. I believe that for a couple of reasons. One, if you wanna add, he gets to say, well, what are you gonna pay me for it? Or why? But two, if you think you should subtract things, you have to think about it. That's my basis for what I, what I showed you. I think that's really important to do. Okay, uh, the part of the C A O is, and can only be suspended or revoked by members of council. The council may give the position of C A O the title of whatever you wanna call them. Under the act, the C A O is responsible for the administration of the municipality, the responsibility to ensure the policy procedures and programs are implemented. Responsibility to advise and inform council on the operation of affairs of the municipality, um, and to carry out any duties or functions assigned to the C A O by council, by this act or any other act. You as council have a responsibility to the C A O and to your staff. I'll tell you a story. I was C A O in a place for twelve years. In twelve years, I got twelve evaluations. I wrote all of them. Cause my council wouldn't do it. It's the way it was. You have to evaluate your C A O. You have to do that job. That is your responsibility. That may be the most important responsibility you have to the staff of the corporation. Cause, you know, I can tell you many stories about what bad C Os can do to a corporation, any size. I can use the city of Winnipeg with a cl- couple of classic examples. I won't say his name. My next slide there. Administrative duties must ensure that minutes of every meeting are made without no over comment. Lots of places say, well, yo, council says, well, yo, I told them about. Uh-uh, it doesn't go in the minutes. You may have told them, but it doesn't go in the minutes. Uh, bylaws and, uh, and ministers of council and all their records, uh, books of accounts are kept in the safe place, revenues of municipality are collected. Money belonging held in, or held by the municipality is posted in the bank or credit union. Council for authorized expenditures of municipality are paid, and accurate records and books are kept for accounts and affairs. One thing I forgot to put in there, except as otherwise decided, C A O may carry out with necessary modifications, as we refer to under section two, respective of councils. A C A O must give notice to council, eh, for, if he's not responsible, sorry, if things need to be rectified. Uh, C A O can, um, delegate things to designated officers, your senior management team, in this case, your bylaw officer would be an example. Tim? Uh, council by, customers can establish one or position to carry out the carries and duties of a designated officer. So your bylaw officer, you have to, eh, as a council, you approve the job descriptions of your, your staff in some form. That could be just the approval of the bylaw, but you should know what your staff are responsible to do. Particularly senior managers, should know their jobs, or at least understand what they're, they're doing for you. Who's responsible for a bylaw? Who's responsible for finance, those kinds of things? Um, the conflict of interest rules, I'm not gonna go through them in any kind of detail. I think that, that you've gone through them. It really means, if you have any involvement financially with the municipality, down to literally almost your brother-in-law, um, you have to report it. And I think you've all got that information that's been provided to you already, so I won't go through that in detail.
Is that it?
That's must be it. That's very quick. I really wanted to point out that at the end of the day, the Municipal Act is fairly complex. You have to rely on your C A O to know and understand the Municipal Act. But also understand that there are many other acts that can have an effect. Um, I can give you many examples, like the Environment Act. Um, in Bojager, they had an individual that literally, you walked, you had, um, wheel wells, you walk through them like a big tunnel. They also had a whole bunch of cars on it. That was a, just a mess. We took five years to try and get him to clean it up because of the Environment Act. Not because he was doing a bad job, but the environment, people weren't going out and doing inspections. Finally, they came out, did an inspection, went, oh my god. But it was only five years. Um, so your C O has got to have time to look at legislation. To make sure that when he gives you advice or the staff give you advice or the senior managers give you advice, it's correct. So understand that those, and they're complex. I had to figure, figured whether there's something like a hundred ninety-seven different pieces of legislation that a municipality has to deal with on a daily basis. And there's nobody I know knows a hundred ninety-seven pieces of legislation of where I can guarantee it. So when someone says to you, and when you make a request, understand that there's your rules, there's the provincial rules, and sometimes they work together, sometimes they're in conflict. Um, and then we're going to have a conversation slightly later about some things that you can do to really help your staff and help them out a lot. As, as a team of counselors and, and the mayor. So I don't know if that's of any value to you, but maybe you understand how maybe it's a little more complex than just sitting in a chair and thinking about it. And with that, there's, there's three fire chiefs back there going. Thank you, gentlemen.
We're missing one.
Oh, missing one. Well, then you have to listen to me about the water. I already feel sorry for you.
I have a question.
Yes?
Uh, one of the things up there said that the C O, um, isn't supposed to give you any, uh, like his opinion. I thought that was in the George Cuff seminar, I thought that, uh, it said that he would, he would come to council or sit in council, give his recommendation, and then we were to kind of discuss it and, uh, make a decision, but he would have an input.
He would have no input?
He would have an input, like he would have like a say, like a recommendation.
Yeah, I, what, what I can say about CEOs is every CEO is different, like every person. I have a different way of working than your past C O, from what I've heard. Um, I think you as counselors have the right to talk to any senior manager you want to to ask questions, um, to get answers, to understand what's going on, and I think every manager would be willing to do that. Um, but you don't have the right to give them direction. So as long, and if you did try to give them direction, they have a responsibility then to tell the C O then has a conversation with you. Um, C O at a meeting, uh, I don't necessarily agree with George, and George is right. You should have a written report in front of you that gives you the positives, the negatives, the costs, et cetera, et cetera, with a recommendation from the staff. That recommendation will always be positive, never be negative. Um, and it shouldn't be because negative resolutions are terrible. It can get you in real trouble. I'll give you an example of that one too at some point. But if you have a question, uh, C O on a report, you have the right to ask it. The C O has a responsibility to respond to it if he knows the answer. And if he doesn't, he should honestly say, I'm sorry, but I don't have that information. I should make sure I'll get it for you. And you can then table that discussion if it's that important. I, I don't ever, I know George extremely well, and I've never heard George ever make that statement that the C O is not to talk at council meeting.
No, I didn't say that. I thought that he said that the C O comes to the council meeting and presents his opinion.
Yep.
Pros and cons like today.
Yep.
And on that slide, I thought it said that he doesn't.
I don't think it did. If it did, if I did, I'll take full blame for taking it. No, council, no, that, that's your senior staff person, then you should be coming with a written report on everything with all the costs and an opinion and a recommendation. And if you have questions on that, you should be willing to answer those questions.
That's what I thought.
That's what I thought too. I was told something different that was happening in this corporation, but I don't know. In its past history, it doesn't matter anymore. But that's my, my opinion. I think you should have the right to talk to, you know, all of the senior managers, as long as you're talking to them and with them and not giving them direction. That's fair enough. You have the right to ask, why wasn't something done? Thank you. Anything else?
I have a question, Jim.
Go, Lori.
Hi, Jim. A really good presentation. Could you just reiterate the, um, about how important it is to have a positive resolution rather than, than moving forward a negative resolution like on last Tuesday's council meeting, I know there was positive resolutions written, um, for the agenda, but we moved negative resolutions, so. Um, and the, and does the mover, moving a positive resolution, does that mover have to, uh, vote in favor of it? Or can they still vote against if they move a positive resolution? Because it's important, a positive resolution is some issues because if a negative one dies, the resolution dies, whereas if you move a positive resolution and if you have two or three people voting against the positive resolution and the remaining four voting in favor of it, then it passes, whereas a negative one, if it, if it, if it, even if it passes or loses, it's off the table because it doesn't move forward because it was a negative resolution, correct?
Yeah, you're right. Um, the reason you do a positive resolution is positive resolution gives you alternatives. If you approve something subject to, then you can talk about development agreements and all kinds of things. Negative resolution, what happens if you say, uh, nothing will happen. There was an example, I'll give you an example from St. Andrews. Uh, I forget, it was a while ago, Lori. If I get this totally wrong, you can tell me I'm wrong. But they passed a negative resolution to take a certain action. The developer came back and said, here's what I want to do, and he changed some things in his presentation. And council thought it was terrible. He said, well, hold it here. You said the vast one. Come on. If, if you've given me a no, the only other answer is yes. Positive resolution, you can get to negotiate. That's why positive is really important. So you should never, ever pass a negative resolution. Defeat a positive resolution is fine. Because it's done, it's finished, it dies on the table, as Lori said.
Well, there's not so much as passing a negative resolution, but it's bringing a positive resolution onto the floor to be voted on is what's, is, is, which is what's important. Um, because even though if the positive resolution fails, um, whatever that resolution was for, that, that fails. But if a negative resolution, um, you know, doesn't fail, if it goes five to two, whatever, um, you know, against or in favor of the negative resolution, then that resolution doesn't move forward. Like say it was for subdivision, so you move a negative subdivision that we will not approve the subdivision, right? And then if, if you have five people voting against that negative resolution and two in favor of it, then that subdivision doesn't move forward because you didn't move a positive resolution.
That's right.
And that's important that we.
Yeah, no, Lori's got a point in terms of it doesn't move forward because it was a negative resolution. Just, just keep in the back of your mind, you either defeat a positive resolution or you approve a positive resolution. Never deal with a negative. That way you can't get in trouble.
So what makes that hard though, Jim, is the mover and secondar are, are, you know, may be intending on voting against it, but they move a positive resolution, so. My question is, if you move a positive resolution, do you have to vote in favor of it?
No, you do not.
Okay.
Not in any procedural orders that I'm aware of.
Okay, that's what some people think that. If you move a positive resolution, then you have to vote in favor of it, so, okay, thank you.
Lori's absolutely right. A lot of people who don't work in this business, particularly the public, will think, well, you know, can voted or can move the motion, just in, um, seconded it, they're in favor. So now there's only five people to vote, right? That would be logical, wouldn't it? That's not the facts. Facts are that you're moving it to get it on the table and to get it discussed. Because if you don't move it, it ain't going to get discussed. So how you're moving and seconding has nothing to do with your vote. Right, Lori?
Right, because what could happen, two people like a mover and seconder could move a negative resolution, uh, put a resolution on the floor and move it and second it. Then council has no other choice than to vote on it. So then the vote goes five to two. And, and the other five people vote in favor, um, or against the negative resolution. And the two people that, that moved the seconded it vote in favor of it, so now that resolution fails. So that was for a conditional use or variance, whatever. Now that conditional use or variance fails because it wasn't a positive resolution. So it makes it tough and, and, and makes it, you know, not fair for the applicant to be put in that kind of a position because, um, we've always been taught by other conferences or seminars too to always move a positive resolution, so just wanted to bring that forward sort. For it to think in.
You understand what Lori's saying is what can happen with a negative?
I believe he's making it very complicated.
Uh, yeah, it's his biggest complication. At the end of the day, Lori's right, what he's saying is positive, stay positive, defeat a positive resolution. Then it's done. It's finished. The mover and seconder does not have to vote the way they move the second. Let's just put it on the floor. The floor is six people, the chair is the chair. The floor rules everything. But you can only act by resolution. Any other questions? Lori?
No, I'm good. Thank you, Jim.
Are you ready?
Okay. No, that's, I'm thinking.
You guys.
We're not ready for you at all. We're doing a, this is all being recorded right now?
Do you want to hear it? I think so, yeah. Yeah, would you guys go? Would you go over here? It's only because the speaker is there and he'll pick you up.
Yeah.
This is being recorded.
Jim, we're not ready for the par department yet. We've got other matters.
Oh, sorry. Sorry. I am sorry, your worship. Forgive me.
Thank you. I will mute your helpful vote, um, item five point two. Um, okay, next we'll carry on.
Nope. You can.
Item five point one, Manitoba Good Roads Association, the twenty twenty-two judging competition winners. Counselor Hunt, this was on the information items at the last, uh, council meeting, but you had technical difficulties.
Yeah, so I don't think council heard all the presentation. I'll keep it short. I also sent council today, and if you received it, it was sent as a picture, so I don't know whether it was big enough, but it was the judging sheet, um, that the judge is used to.
Counselor Hunt, one moment, please.
Do we want to move this on?
Okay.
Want to move in section this? It's, it's like, uh, the agenda item has a mover or a seconder for this.
No, this what, you're talking about item five point one?
Correct.
Yes. No, this was an information item.
Okay.
So there's no mover or seconder or, uh, resolution required. We can't do it. We're in a meeting of whole, we can't do a resolution anyway. Uh, sorry, Counselor Hunt, uh, go ahead.
Okay, so I just wanted to bring counsel up to date. Like I say, we, we won the, uh, class one, which is best maintained system roads in, in in the province. There's five districts. There's about a hundred and thirty municipalities that belong to Manitoba Good Roads Association. Uh, so it's divided up into five districts. The top points of the winners of the five districts wins the provincial award, and that award is presented at the Manitoba Good Roads, uh, presentation in Winnipeg, April fourth, fourth and fifth. Um, it's kind of different that we won, we won the best maintained roads and we also won most improved. So back in two thousand and twenty, we won the best maintained system of roads, and we also won the provincial cup, so we had the most points. So then in two thousand and twenty-one, I guess we had a lower score. And then in two thousand and twenty-two here, we had the best score, I guess. So then the most improved is handed out to the municipalities that has the most improved or the largest improvement on the judging, which I sent you there. There are sixteen items, I think, that they judge the roads on. And, um, that's what I had sent out, like it's gravel, it's uniform grade, it's a width, it's the surface, it's a crown, dust control, signage, safety, road numbers, civic addressing, back slopes, side slopes, uh, condition of the grass cutting and the ditches and on and on and on. So, um, you know, we're lucky to have a great aggregate supplier. We've got a great supplier of the road stabilization and dust control product. Uh, we have employees that take pride in their work. And, uh, most of all, council over the years have always come to the table with, uh, good budgets and good equipment for them to do their job. And, and the suppliers that, that, um, with the, with the equipment to do the job. So I'd like to acknowledge Public Works. I think we should send a letter to them thanking them for their hard work that they do and, and, uh, from council. And this is about the fifth or sixth time that we've won this award in the past twenty years. So, so like I say, hopefully we can attend, uh, the, the, um, dinner, which is in accordance with the, um, conference in Winnipeg on April fourth and fifth. And usually, you know, four or five, three or four public works employees go to it because there's also a trade show that, um, is good for them to see some of the new products out and that. So with that, I'd like to, we can send a council to Public Works thanking them. And like I say, it's been, it's been a great on their behalf that they get this done. And it's not only the road, and we have to support them as council too, because some of the residents hear this and they say, oh, you, how can we win an award for good roads? But I sent you the, the item there, and there's sixteen items that, that, um, judge the points about a one hundred points to get to that point. So we'll be getting two awards, maybe even three in, in April if we have enough points to beat the other five districts. So thank you for that. And that's all I have to say on that because I said that in the, in the last meeting, but I know council couldn't, couldn't hear that. So thank you for the opportunity to repeat that.
Thank you, Counselor Hunt. Um, item, any questions of, uh, Counselor Hunt? Item five point, point two, you all request active transportation route in Petersfield. Counselor, you had, you had comments.
That was also on the, that was also on the agenda. I had sent, um, um, some letters out from our, um, uh, M P from Mr. Bazan and also from, um, Minister Wharton's office and also Minister Lajimori's office. And you have the letter from Dennis and Holly Wall in front of you there. Um, you know, this will come up for discussion, I believe, uh, when we have the, um, the trails master plan and the rec master plan be the presentation, I hope, early January from Scatlift Murray. That was from the open houses that were held in Petersfield and St. Andrews, um, that people came. So we had read the report or the ask, uh, you know, from the walls. Um, Mayor Sue, what I had asked you there when we lost sound last time was you attended, um, the unveiling at the Manitoba Human Rights Museum for a stamp for Sergeant Tommy Prince. And, um, and this trail follows, uh, Tom Prince Drive in Petersfield. So whether there's something we can also do in accordance with, uh, Heritage Ministers, with the province and the federal government, um, it can be part of the TransCanada Trail Extension. Um, but the letters I had sent out from the M L As and, and, and the M Ps is very positive. And hopefully we can move this, this forward and, um, put Petersfield on the map with a trail like this with the TransCanada Trail Extension or any other grants that are available to us at the time. So if we can put this over to Teresa, I guess, or to that department to have them look into it. And, and also, like I say, it'll be part of the rec master plan and the trails master plan that will be presented to us in, I believe, early January, probably when Scatlift Murray comes out and does that. So that's all I have to add to that. I'm just looking for support of council to, to keep on moving ahead with this. And also support from our, uh, provincial and federal governments on this project as well too, so.
Good worship.
Thank you.
Could I suggest that a, a resolution from this committee that if we refer to the C O in the presentation of a report in terms of the work plan that needs to be done to get this moving forward, to be brought forward in the hopefully no later than the last council meeting in January. That'll give the staff at least two or three weeks to take a look at it realistically and give you, give you some information of what has to be done.
Okay.
Yes, thank you, but, um, we can't pass resolutions in.
You're, you're a committee passing a resolution to council.
We've never done this, but okay, resolved. Uh, this matter be referred to the C O for administration to discuss. Um, or to come to the second meeting in January. You have a mover, please?
I'll move that.
Deputy Mayor Dornbos, seconded by Counselor Hunt. All in favor?
I.
Item new business, item six point one, ready to move childcare project. Um, we have all the attachments, council. I hope you had a chance to read them. This was part of the, uh, A M M were involved and then Counselor Hunt was on John Q. Uh, where this came through it forward as well. Do you have any questions for Counselor Hunt?
We have a good. Hello? Tim? Really?
Sound con, Lori?
A lost sound again, Tim.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Anything yet? Okay. Can you hear me now, Tim?
He can, can he not phone in?
I, I can hear you now. You just come back on.
Okay.
Can you guys hear me now?
Yeah.
We're talking, Counselor Hunt, we're talking about the AMM visit, January twenty seventh, majority wants an in-person meeting. Okay, do you have any items, council, do you have any ideas what you would like them to know ahead of time? Or if you could email me or all of council direct. It says, please let me know, honor before January twenty seventh. So we'd have to have our questions then. Personally mine, one would be if AMM can look into the bill thirty eight is coming into effect, bill thirty seven. The huge costs that. End up, the RMs end up paying because of all the appeal periods. Easy way to appeal, and then can get involved to lobby the province for some financial help towards the appeals. That's what I could think of, but I'll type it all out and share, email, send it to all. I think that's the best way we can handle that, Counselor Hunt, do you have anything to be brought to the AMM's attention?
I don't think so. It might be good to get a copy of what AMM has been working on, like they have the standing resolutions. Or the standing asks that they're asking the federal government for. For that the new council can see and ask, you know, AMM how those are coming along, because it might be some of the questions that the new council has. You know, asking the provincial government or any, any other government agencies. So like, you know how we have in the book to, for the AMM conference, it has, it had the. Resolutions that they're, that they're working on, so we could get a, an updated report of, of, of what those. Of how they're making out with their lobbying of the government and different government organizations. So.
I believe we got an email from them, not that long, a couple of months ago. Perhaps you, we all got sent that, perhaps, do you recall that?
Yeah.
Okay, then perhaps you could forward that. Email to myself for all of council, because they had just given an, an update.
Okay, I'll go back and see if I can find it then, okay, if, if not, administration should have it, don't. But we can, we can, we can find that it's an update of, of their lobbying efforts. To the government, to the government agencies, so.
Okay, now have the in-camera portion.
Can we go back to the daycare, I had some information on that, that, that is kind of pertinent to talk about and, and hopefully get this letter of intent in. And what the letter, and also there's a letter of support that goes along with it. But I had a couple of ideas of where it could go and what we could do in partnership and to be part of our, of our letter of intent. So can I mention that?
Yeah, I guess you did, we were technical difficulties, we had passed this, put it over to. Interim CAO who's going to check with you. Because the deadline is, for the deadline to put this in was to date.
Well, that's what it says from the AMM, but if you go to the other one. And look at the letter of intent, which is the third one on your agenda, and go down to item.
That's February twentieth.
Right, right.
So could you just quickly state for council? What your, some of your suggestions are for the daycare?
Well, as you see, you need two acres of service property of sewer and water, we don't have water, and we passed a resolution last week. To do a study for water, but the airport does have sewer. Which would be a good spot, maybe you could also partner maybe with Gimli and Winnipeg Beach and put part of your intent, a letter of intent there. People traveling to the city, you would have. Maybe a better chance of sometimes when you have a group. Letter of, of intent. You know, maybe in Petersfield, there's that, the Petersfield Park there, there's land, there's land there, but again, no, no services, but. You know, council could drill a well and a holding tank or treatment plant, you know, so that's another option. The other option is the subdivision is coming to Lockport, I believe there's ten acres set aside there for recreational land. Which would include playgrounds. You know, that could go there, it's a great selling feature for a, for a subdivision with having a daycare there, we could ask, we could also. Dictate in the development agreement that the developer would hand over two acres of land from that, from that project. You know, other RMs never had land as well, and they went to developers and asked for land and developer would, 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 would give land, and hopefully by that time when that, the subdivision does become. Into the plan, there will be water, we'll have the water study done, by then there will be sewer there. And you see, there's also fifteen years of rent free maintenance of the outside, but the. The good thing is we, the RM would, would get that land, where they get that building back after fifteen years and could carry on as a daycare or do whatever with it. The letter of support is something we should get out to, and that would go to other daycares. For letter of support, you know, additional information, what waiting lists, if they have staff to serve the additional spaces. And other factors that would support the needs of our community, you know, so that could go to an RM of Gimli, RM of Winnipeg Beach. You know, people traveling to Winnipeg, I know it wouldn't be for school, for school age children, but for infants. Could be dropped off there with parents working in Winnipeg, whatever, so sometimes you always have a greater chance of, of getting. Something is when you go with a partnership and, and a region, so that's just a thought. Where the EDO and the CAO could. Talk to us or talk to me, but that's a pretty good process, so we have two months or a week or like a month to get this in, and. I don't know what else for land that we have that would be serviceable, so, other than the airport does have sewer, but no water, so, a well, again, a well could be drilled, so. That's all I have for that, and like I say, it's, it's been good from the province to hand this over to John Q, they're going to be the. The driving force in it, and, and, and we're a member of John Q, so. It's further in our hat for being a member and being part of it, so, and getting us off the ground, so. Look forward to what we can do to make this. Come to reality.
Thank you. Any questions of Counselor Hunt? Good, thank you. Now we move in camera, motion that council will be in camera. At six twenty eight PM to discuss matters that are in preliminary stages and respecting which discussion in public could prejudice. The municipality's ability to carry out its activities or negotiations. As well as legal and personnel issues, and be it further resolved that the members of council agree to keep in confidence. A matter that is discussed in a meeting that is close to the public under section one fifty two, three. And that the committee decides to keep confidential until the matter is discussed at a meeting of the council. Or of a committee conducted in public. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Fabelkorn, seconder. Counselor Morecki, all in favor?
Aye.
We're currently in camera, thank you.